Good. All right, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, November 16th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements this evening. Is there anyone here for anything not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing is none. We can go right into the first thing, which is the public hearing for the tax classification and possible votes. Do you want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Gladly. Open the, make a motion to open the public hearing on the tax classification for 2022.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Blatchford? You can both come up. You don't get to hide back there, all of you guys.
Good evening. Jack Blatchford, Carol Fields. So the purpose of this is the fiscal 2022 classification hearing. Just a few, I believe you got this information sheet from Beth before the meeting, but just a couple, couple items to go over. Calendar year 2020 sales analysis indicated the average single-family home will see an approximate 5.34% increase in assessed value for fiscal 21. The total assessed value of the town was, let's see, 1 billion 227 million 581,773, which is approximate 6.57% increase from fiscal 21. That being said, our tax rate is going to show a decrease of 38%, 38 cents rather, going down to 1634 from 1672. The fiscal 22 average single-family house assessed value is 357,400. The 21 average was 339,300. This will be a result, or result in a tax increase of $166,85. For fiscal 22, the median single-family home is assessed, or the assessed value will be 348.5. There are 268 single-family homes assessed greater than 500,000 for comparison reason. The same in fiscal 20, or 208 rather, in fiscal 21. The main reason of this meeting is to see if there'll be a shift in tax rate between residential and CIP, which is commercial, industrial, personal property. If we do 150% decrease in residential, bring it down to 1581, it will increase CIP to 2451. The board voted today, the Board of Assessors, we suggest a single tax rate for all classes of property. Again, the feeling being if we increase the 2451 for commercial, industrial, and personal property, we will lose whatever commercial, industrial business we have in town. Thank you.
Well, that was easy. Any questions? Seeing is none. Anybody wish to make a motion on this?
We should probably close the public hearing.
Yeah, to close the public hearing first, yeah. Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I would make a motion that we move to accept a single tax rate for all classes of property as presented by the Board of Assessors tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Tim, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good day.
Jane.
I just want to pay tribute to Beth, Beth's retiring at the end of December. This is her last time to be presenting for us. I just want to remind you, if you could all go into, yep. Where are they going to go? For the, to sign that.
Lisa, where is he?
No, it's, go on, you know, you had to do it last year. You had to go into the state fight.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
If you could do that again, please.
Absolutely.
Hopefully I'll remember which your passwords and that are, but that's what we need to do.
I will try to remember my password.
Lisa, could you remind us a little bit how we do that? Do you have that?
I think I still have the email from when we did it last year.
Yeah, we'll find it, but.
I don't have mine.
That was ages ago, so we'll have to reinvent the wheel. Yeah. Cool. Well, thank you, Beth, for your years of service and.
Yeah, much appreciated.
Ability, crunch numbers.
I'm gonna miss that.
Plans for retirement? You gonna do anything fun? Are you planning, what are your plans for retirement?
Spending a lot of time with my grandchildren.
There you go. All right, so brings us to the second agenda item. Board of Assessors temporary appointment notification and possible votes. We have in our packet, beginning of November, Anthony Sacco resigned from the Board of Assessors. It's important that we have a full board to fill the vacancy. The Board of Selectmen, along with the Board of Assessors, must have a roll call vote to approve the appointment. They're looking to appoint Arthur Griffin to fill the position. Mr. Griffin?
Hello.
Thank you for volunteering.
Well, it's the least I can do.
I'm assuming you guys are all pleased with, with Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, Art was on the board for several, two or three terms, and we reached out to him when Anthony resigned, and as he said, he was more willing to help to come back on.
All right. So with that, I'd make a motion that we appoint Arthur Griffin to fill the position or the term that Anthony Sacco vacated recently.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
You gotta do a roll call vote according to what you read.
Oh, you need a roll, oh, I'm sorry. I do need a roll call vote.
You're the one that read it.
You think I was the one that took the shot till I had.
That's it.
All right, so I'll change that. Can I have a roll call vote on this, please?
It's Patrick, aye.
Bona, aye.
Morse, aye.
Cortez, aye.
It also includes the Board of Assessors, right? Along, along with.
Field, aye.
That's got it.
Sunday you have, Ben.
I have to say aye?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Next time.
All right. That's it? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Due to a scheduling conflict, we are going to be passing over agenda item number three. It will be on our next agenda, which brings us to four, which would be to approve and sign the order of taking for the Gilboa Street property, which is a 3.09 acre parcel and possible votes. Anybody feel up to a motion on this?
Sure. Make a motion that we execute the order of taking for the Gilboa Street property. It's 3.09 acres, and it is something that was recently passed at the special, the annual, the special town meeting.
Yep, second. Okay, motion was made by Tim, seconded by Mike. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's got that. All right.
Do you have an original document?
No.
Yes, they're in the.
Selectmen's office?
Yep.
Time is of the essence. I was gonna ask if we were doing that tonight. So there's a 30-day period here. If I understand the explanation correctly, Town Council is going to draft a deed and present whatever parties and interests there may be with the opportunity to sign that deed and prevent this. But the clock is ticking, so once the sort of taking is signed, this good deed has to notice is provided. If they don't sign the deed, then we'll take our own deed under eminent domain and file it with the registrar. Which sign, the only thing they would be able to contest is the portanto, the value offered to them and not the order.
Okay. All right. The next item is to identify the charge of the Public Safety Committee and possible votes. And there is a nice memo in here from the town administrator.
Well, I wasn't here when you did this. I was away on vacation. And, but we've talked about it quite a bit, so I already thought some issues through. And there's, there's two comments I'd like to make. The first is, there are many significant policy discussions that would inform this discussion, but are necessary to it, that are thorny issues that in the past we've either brought up during budget time or conversations in general about staffing levels and prospective needs of the town. And this is just gonna put a fine point on that. So we'll do our best to identify these things going forward. I've got a memo started, it's a couple pages deep, questions are significant. It goes, it runs the full gamut from what is the adequacy of our staffing levels and public safety now compared to where we think we might be if the town achieves some level of build-out in the next 30 years. That whole conversation and how you would roll that out financially in terms of our budget circumstances. Ideally, what you want is the building you need 20 years from now is the building you built so that you're not in an obsolete facility five years after you build it, regardless of what you do, regardless of whether we keep three different facilities or one or whatever you do, just what are those needs gonna look like? And how does that impact whether or not we have a town mechanic, whether or not we, how we configure our dispatch, and another, a number of other policy considerations. There's also a need to define what you're not going to be doing with this conversation. Most projects that come through the procurement process in Massachusetts that are over a million and a half dollars require a designer and an owner's project manager and a whole bunch of really detailed things that are pretty far down the line procurement-wise. By the time you, you can be of the mindset, and many municipalities are, that you can do a quote-unquote feasibility study and take every idea you've ever had and hand it over to the architect or the designer and have them muddle through interviews and sizing estimates and everything else. But before feasibility, there's actually a business case, and that's a more general conversation, and it's much healthier for municipalities to have that conversation internally, not spending any money on outside help, to just work out what is the consensus amongst the leadership of the town and the people of the town on how much they're willing to spend, what it is that they see coming in the future, and what the actual needs and potential wants there are in order to just scope out what it is you're talking about. And that business case is what I tried to draw attention to in this charge, which is the bullet points on the second page. I think it's revealing sometimes to look at the space utilization of our current departments, their vehicle fleets and major equipment, because at any given time, I don't know how many people in town would pass a quiz on how many vehicles everybody has, what they're worth, where they're stored, when's the last time they were used, et cetera, et cetera. So situational awareness, the first thing you have to do is what is the situation we have now? Where's all our stuff? How much space does it take up? Is it being subjected to unnecessary forces of nature and shortening its lifespan as a result of the way it's being utilized? The second item would be to identify where we're currently out of compliance with codes. So as soon as we start talking about trying to do something different, we also have to be mindful of the fact that what we're doing right now may not actually pass muster, but we're allowed to do it because it's a pre-existing situation. But how many people can you sleep in sleeping quarters at a fire station? What's per square foot? How high are the ceilings? All of those things. If you're gonna build something new, you have to fix your existing shortfall before you can size out what happens next. I also think the second bullet will help the general public understand why it is that any of this discussion has occurred, because I don't know how much awareness there is in the community at large as to situation at the highway department, situation at the fire department, cramped facilities, constant brownouts of electricity, the things that we talk about. Community development, this is bullet number three. This is the build-out analysis, right? So every, every municipality has a build-out number, whether or not it's on your dashboard, you know what it is. It's always revealing to people. I remember a few years back when the population of South Kingston, Rhode Island, was about 21,000, and statewide planning did an estimate and said, actually, someday you're gonna be a town of 57,000. And everybody in South Kingston went, huh! Right? Because they didn't realize how much buildable space they had that was unprotected for conservation or any other purpose. It's all buildable real estate. And again, it's a shame to build a big expensive building, go out and borrow for it and outgrow it within a short period after you finish building it. So build-out analysis should give you a sense of what you reasonably can anticipate having to do 20 years from now. You can only do that when community development comes up with, with an appropriate analysis. So you would project the space needs. And then lastly, one of the major selling points to a combined facility versus individual facilities would be are there any efficiencies that you can be, can be realized? And technology's advancing to the point where it's not necessarily true that, for instance, you would share a heating plant, you know, a big old furnace that would heat all three departments if you put three departments together, because today we're more likely to use heat pumps. And you would, no matter if you have three buildings or one, you're probably gonna install almost the same number of heat pumps. So you're gonna spend almost the same amount of money. Those conversations are worth having with, with people familiar with, with facilities of this size. And what we want to avoid in this conversation is really detailed conversations about real estate or building elevations, or all the things that go into conceptual design. You're not there yet. What you really just need to do is get in touch with your public safety departments and determine what their needs are, and let that guide the conversation. So I took a whack at this, but I, there's no pride of authorship. This would be the first time I've done this specific kind of project, so I don't hold myself out as an expert, following the guidance that I've read from other people who have done it. It's only part of the business case, because the other business case would be each individual department, right? Where are their needs? What's the timing? What's the rollout look like? Don't even call it option A or B, because that suggests a preference, just one option or the other. We can, this conversation for, no matter what you do, as long as you're moving the ball down the field, you're making progress. So as we surface issues and we have conversations about how we'd solve them, it's all going to end up someplace that the town can live with. And that's, we just gotta start it and move.
Right. That was a thought process when I, I suggested this to you. I've said it to you a few different times, and I said it to Kevin, was just to identify what our needs, what needs were of the town, not, not trying to necessarily push the building, but it's something that has to be addressed. And I think through your explanation, you captured a lot of the thoughts that I had, and obviously you have a lot of other input in there, because there's things that you said that I had no part of. And that's the whole goal of it, is it was just to identify their needs and, and see if it's something that will work. And if we, my feeling is if we do it like this and we go, go forward properly, then it has a good chance of success. Something needs to be done, especially with the highway department. It's well past where it needs to be.
As a group, Matt, yeah?
No, nope. And because there was, when we did it when Matt was away, it got labeled as a feasibility study, and it's really not what it should have been labeled as. And I didn't know, I didn't know the difference of it, and Matt quickly brought me up to speed on that. So it was just that this was generated, Matt generated this for us, so then we could actually give a function to the group instead of just running the muck and, and coming up with all kinds of crazy ideas. It's just keep it back to the basics, whatever our needs and whatever our wants, and think about long-term build-outs.
So we put a group together to study the feasibility for building a public safety complex.
But it wasn't a feasibility though, David.
Well, that's the word I heard when it was put together. People back and looking to.
Yep.
And now we're just gonna change everything, and it's gonna do, this committee is gonna do something completely different for what it was for. Am I the only one that finds that misleading?
You don't find it misleading. I, I think it would.
I actually do.
Okay. So you want me to finish my sentence? Or you, I could just stop. I don't care, it doesn't matter. But it was misunderstood what, how it should be labeled, and so it wasn't purposely misleading anybody into a feasibility or whatever. Right from day one, when I, I mentioned this myself, it was to, and I, and Matt used the same exact words when he described it, to identify the needs and the wants. There's two different lists when you try to put this together, and you need to know what the need, your absolute needs are, and then what your wants are, and then you try to put it together. So a feasibility study, and Matt would have to explain it better than I could, but that's more of a legal term, and it, it goes into a whole different discussion of what we're intending to do here.
So the labeling on feasibility, I'll take onus on that. I looked at it literally as in, is this possible? Not looking at the legal terms as to, you know, what exactly falls under, under procurement with the state.
Yeah. So I don't even think it's fair to your department heads to reach, broach the question, is it possible? I think they need to be heard from, and their, and their staff, and their union staff. I think we've, not we, I don't even know how many people were on the board, but over the course of the years, the town of Douglas has had a culture where management is making things work with what you have, and doing, in many cases, an exceptionally good job with the resources that you're provided by town meeting. When you're at the cusp of what may be a fairly substantial change in terms of staffing and facilities, you need to unpack that a little bit and let your department heads and staff tell you, well, you know what, we're working three to a carol, we're, you know, we're hot racking, we're trying to share computers, we don't have enough electricity in the building to run the equipment, we're brownin' stuff out. You gotta hear all that. You gotta collect all the evidence and all the data and say, well, what kind of facility would solve those problems? You're not at go, no-go. Feasibility is about go, no-go, right? We could possibly afford to do this, so if town meeting votes the money, the very next step would actually be design. We're gonna design the building using a very specific set of parameters. You're not even there yet. You can't even be specific about what you need. The business case is to unearth all of the issues in the context that you're hoping to try to solve them somehow. But will you solve it with an individual building for each department, or perhaps combine police and fire, but highway is separate? Those are conversations you're not getting to yet, because you just need to, I keep coming back to my favorite term, which is situational awareness. What is the status of what we have right now? What are the operational difficulties that our facilities cause for us? Because I asked the question naive, I did not know the answer the day we were at the fire station. Selectman Fitzpatrick and I were doing a quick tour with, was that?
Fred Fontaine.
With Fred Fontaine from Building and Facilities.
By Building and Facilities, just for.
He was brand new.
New horizon.
And I said, what happens when there's no power? How do you open these garage doors? Right? That just opened up a whole disclosure of a whole bunch of problems that I wasn't aware of, and I've worked here for three and a half years. Well, it doesn't work sometimes anyway, so we're pulling these things up by hand. Well, the risk of injury, slowing the response, there's a whole bunch of problems with things like that. Those are the, we need to have all those conversations before we can think about what happens next. And for instance, I fielded a question today from the staff, from the command staff, fire department. They said, well, what exactly are you thinking? And I said, can you say right now that your fleet is ideally configured to the needs of the town now, in what reasonably could happen in five years? So all Bob's projects go forward, the buildings are built, now you got a million, 1.1 million square foot warehouse, you're gonna be first on scene, obviously not doing it yourself, but do you have what you need? And there is no answer yet, because the wheels started turning of, all right, well, we also have 3,700 acres of forest, we have got this, we've got that. And how do you store, once you figure out what vehicles you're gonna have, where, what's the ideal way to store them, what's the ideal way to work on them when they're broken, what's the ideal way to set up your staff so that you're ready to jump on and get out? Those are all things that we have to talk about. I was afraid, Mr. Vice Chairman, that if we got too far down the feasibility thing, that you'd be missing the opportunity to engage a very transparent and open public process in arriving at a consensus of what people would be willing to vote for.
I see this as anything but transparent and open, and I'm reading from your letter. My understanding is that the committee was not formed to address all of the items comprising a feasibility study. And then in the same paragraph, we talk about major organizational dynamics like the ideal call full-time staffing ratio over time, internal versus regionalized dispatch. This seems like some pot we're gonna throw everything into, all the old ideas that we've dealt with over the years, we're gonna throw it into, and this committee's gonna make all of this decisions. I'm not a favor of that. It's not what the committee was formed for, it's not what we talked.
No, the committee doesn't make those decisions. You do. Those decisions rely solely within the purview of the select.
Which is gonna get you put in the position of having to go against the committee's recommendations.
No, you need to resolve those things before you can fully know what the needs of the departments are. You're putting yourself on a timeline, not just your committee, because the topic will have to be broached with everybody. For instance, dispatch is an example. If many other communities are going the regional route, do we still want to say no to that? Are the reasons why we said no to that three years ago still valid reasons? That conversation belongs here with the select. You can be framed through my office, and we can do research and give you information, but you have to, in the course of giving this committee its charge, you have to decide how it is you want to proceed. You might save money but lose effectiveness. You might have to reach out to another community, sign an intermunicipal agreement to work together towards a regional solution. Those are things, we can work to get you information, that's a decision. You're the chief executive body of the town, you have to make those decisions. If, and deciding not to decide is a decision, because we still have to run the place. So if there's no decision made, then we'll still have a single dispatch station, position in the basement of this building until further notice. We may put two people on it, but that'll be what we have, because those are the resources we've been given. So that's how it'll work.
I think one of the biggest things is, is, you know, again, I take responsibility for using the wrong term of feasibility. But I mean, the biggest thing is, is that deciding not to decide and doing nothing has been the status quo in Douglas for eons. It's how we ended up in the position that we're in, the highway department that's falling down, and a substandard fire station. And regardless of what we choose to call this committee, something needs to be done. I'm tired of sitting on a board that's talk, not action, and we need to start taking action. This was the first step towards that. It may not be popular, it may have been misnamed, people may get their, you know, proverbial undies in a bunch over it, but it's progress. It's gonna be a little bit painful, things are gonna be dropped, mistakes are gonna happen, but it's progress. Things need to change, we need to move forward, and these are real issues. With all three of. of our public safety departments that need to be addressed.
Seems more like bait and switch than progress.
There's no bait and switch and I absolutely resent that. And if you've got a veiled comment you'd like to make, Mr. Vice Chairman, make it.
I guess we're even. I resent the panties and a bunch comment as well.
Well, have at it.
So we're even.
There was no bait and switch. Exactly what's happening is things that should have been taking place years ago. We're actually finally starting to move forward and do something. If there's anybody on the board that doesn't care for it, town clerk's right there, go down and resign.
Oh, you're so far out of line it isn't even funny. If we don't agree with you, we have to go down and resign? Is that your message here?
Dave, I'm just glad you're awake in tonight's meeting.
I'm awake in every meeting.
Few comments. I understand, I heard what you're saying and I have a different thought as to what I even brought forward in this role of this committee, group, whatever you want to call it. I just read through Matt's bullet points and it captures what we're talking about. We're not talking about dispatch in here, we're not talking about anything else. That is up to, and I've said this to each one of them, and I know Adam in the Highway Department has actually done it, he is proactive in doing what he needs. If you're the police, he's fire, he's highway, whatever, I could care less what the interworkings of your department is, it doesn't matter to me. I care about all three departments and I don't care about one over the other one. I'm actually in a pretty good position to be neutral on the whole thing. All I want you to do is bring in your needs and wants and we try to just create a menu. However it is, if you say that you need 47 rooms in your building, that's up to you to do it. And if it doesn't fly at the end of the day, maybe you didn't assess your needs properly. That's not up to fire or highway to make that determination if it's the police department or whatever. The whole purpose of this is just to identify what the needs are. Can we put it in one building? Can we put it in three different buildings? Wherever it goes, can it afford to expand if it needs to as the town grows? Matt and I had a conversation about this, we're at 9,200 people and projected growth of this town could be 20,000, I think is what you told me. So we need to think about that stuff. And I was proactive when I started doing it, when I first suggested it, and this isn't new to me. This is something that's come, John, the Highway Superintendent, has had it on Capitol. I happen to be on Capitol, so that's why I'm aware of that. And he gets frustrated and is like, well, I just won't put it back in. I said, no, leave it on there. I want it on every single year. You leave it there because it has to be talked about, it has to be addressed. Historically, what he hasn't done is been proactive and figured out what he actually needs. He just knows he needs a new building, but he doesn't really know what it is. So that was the whole purpose of me raising my hand in the air and saying, we need to address this. This is, the time is now to talk about it because the town, for the first time in a long time, through the efforts of everybody in the town, government, to get us under control and be able to even consider this. Five years ago, it would have been a laughing stock to even talk about it.
I'm not arguing with any of that.
Yeah, but, alright.
At the beginning of your statement, you said, we're not talking about regionalized dispatch, and I'm using that as an example, and I'm looking at it at the top of the page too. The charge of this committee is going far beyond what it was formed for. And I realize that I've gotten under everybody's skin and certainly the chairman can't seem to hold his temper, but we can't form a committee for one reason, which was 90% of the statement you just made, and then slip in a whole bunch of other responsibilities, like force sizes for the three departments and all the rest of that. It was designed as a feasibility, and I'm not gonna pick apart the wording, the town administrator doesn't like feasibility, he wants to do something else. Well, sorry, that's what we formed the committee for. It was for a feasibility study. I think it's bait and switch to go back and have it do something else and blame it, and again, the chairman's all too quick to fall on the sword. My fault, wrong word, sorry. Looks like bait and switch to me.
Well, first of all, I never said regional dispatch.
No, I know you didn't.
No, you just told me I did at the beginning of my statement, you said-
Well, at the beginning of your statement, you said, we're not talking about regional dispatch.
Nobody is. So I think the conversation's getting just a little bit way off accurate. Regional dispatch is a decision for you to make. I already said that. But you cannot design a building for three departments if you don't address the issue of where is dispatch gonna go and how is it gonna be configured? And we already did the analysis that showed that regional dispatch is an option for the town. So if you're gonna go out and ask people for 50 million bucks to build a building, you had better be able to answer questions like that and you have to do that. Normally, needs assessments by charge go to the Building Facilities Committee, it's in the bylaw, it's their responsibility, not yours. The reason why you get involved is because there are policy decisions that have to be made here by no other committee at all and not by the town administrator or the police chief or the fire chief. They need to be made here by the five of you to set the direction for everybody else, whether or not you're gonna have a mechanic, where you're gonna put dispatch, how the fleets are gonna be configured, what's the major threat, what do you want to address? And all these other people are experts and you should listen to them. But at the end of the day, the way the project gets scoped and sent out for people to consider is your responsibility. These five bullet points don't talk about regional dispatch. These five bullet points are the charge for the committee that was formed. I wasn't here. I came back, there's a committee. A committee that's doing a whole lot of stuff that either Building Facilities should be doing or I should be doing. So my reaction is, let's try to clarify the mission of this thing so that it gets a work product that will move the project forward. This is a business case for one option. My opinion doesn't count for garbage, but it may not be the option that I would favor with the information I have right now. But after we have a conversation for three or four months and we all keep an open mind, you might get a really good solution. But you won't know what that solution looks like until you hear from everybody and they're able to finally come out of their shells and say, you know, for years I've done it this way because I had to because I was financially constrained. But if I could do it differently, I would do it differently and I would have this piece of equipment and I would store it this way and I'd have staff trained to do it that way. Until you know what people want to do and what their plans are, you don't know what building you need to build. You don't. They're too small already. But you can't do nothing because we've already got mobile office space coming to get, to rescue employees from an unsafe atmospheric environment in one of the buildings. The other one barely has enough power to run. And then we've got an accredited, one of the only accredited police agencies in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the basement of a municipal center, which will not be adequate. If you just add one car on the road, it won't be adequate. So there is no status quo forward. It's really not a viable option. That's the one option that's truly not viable is to keep doing what we're doing for much more than a couple of years.
Ultimately, Matt, that was the intention behind it. All three departments, we can't continue doing what we're doing. The fastest, most immediate need was a building that's an environmental hazard, obviously.
It triggers the question and that's what, that's how this came about. Debt is rolling off into fiscal '23. You have a building that's unsafe to work in and we can't even put our equipment in because it's too small, so we're like cutting things up. We buy it, we cut the top off, so we fit it in a damn building. That's foolishness, right? So now the public deserves, Town Meeting deserves to hear that people who had good information explored every option and either scored one lower than the other before you spend any money on architects to do feasibility. Because feasibility, really, what the biggest thing about it is it ties a building to a piece of real estate. And the demands of that piece of real estate, public water, public sewer, power, and you don't even want to go there yet. If you go that fast and that far, you're gonna end up with a proposal that people are gonna feel like you cooked it up, you hired some guy for 100 grand to write a pretty little fancy report with a shiny cover and that's gonna be the only game in town. Vote yes or no. Those things never go well.
I want to ask a question for no other reason because I don't know the answer. Has all the selectmen been in all these three different buildings, departments, whatever? Just to see what the facilities are like? Are you familiar with all three of them?
I have been in all buildings.
Yeah.
As you.
Yeah. I didn't know the answer, so when we went through with Fred Fontaine, Matt offered to do that, to bring Fred up to speed. We went through this building, we went through the Fire Department. It was enlightening just to see what the condition of that building was in, how they're functioning in that building. Because of what I'm in for business, it's just blatant code violations everywhere of how they run on a daily basis. And it's obvious that the police department, it's ridiculous that they're in such a small space, that it's only, they're just sitting, you're waiting for the day when they say, we just don't fit anymore. And that's why I went after all three departments because they're easily there, but they're all, everybody has the mindset, as Matt said, just be quiet, deal with what we've got, see if we can get along. Well, that's been instilled in them so long, they had no choice, but at some point, we need to address it.
In defense of all the people who've made this run and have done a wonderful job doing it, they had to do it that way.
Right.
And the select board that presided over it didn't have a choice.
No.
It really didn't.
No, no.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it from a negative standpoint that anybody did anything wrong.
Right. But sometimes the people will say to me, oh, don't be so negative about the past. I'm not really trying to be negative about the past. Everybody did what they could with the resources they had. We all sat through those meetings with the override conversation with the public and saw people's emotions and reactions. Have we gone a long way to solving a lot of the public's objections at that time? Yes. So you now have opportunities you never had before. The hardest thing to do as a government body is to preside over positive change. It is. Because when you're up against financial constraints, everybody's on the same team and we're all gonna pull together and we're all just gonna solve problems by working together. When you have so much money you can't help yourself, well, it's easy to cooperate then, right? Because what do you need? We'll do another override, you know? We'll all move to Dover or Lexington or wherever the heck they do an override every year. But you're right in the middle. You're in a town that doesn't want to do overrides, it doesn't want to, and for good reasons because you only have a limited tax base. But you are growing and you have more resources than you had three years ago. But they are, it's not an unlimited pie, it's a limited pie. So how are you best going to move the pieces around so everybody gets some piece of it, some taste of it? And that is the most challenging thing a government can do.
And it's achieved through team effort.
So it's not gonna be easy, but-
It's even more difficult-
It's not an attempt to deceive anybody. I-
It's harder, Matt-
It's an attempt to put all the issues out.
Because historically speaking, you try and do a project of this size or scope or even a fraction of the size of the scope, you get one bite at the apple. You legitimately, that's it.
Right.
Like you only get one chance to get this. You know, I appreciate you putting together the statement and the scope and the mission statement behind there because it's, if we're gonna try and do something, let's do it right. You know, that's the long and the short of it. And personally, if there is, if all of these wants and needs assessments and the charge of this comes back through and it comes up with something, you know, that we can put together that makes sense and be able to get all three of these departments where they need to be, it's a win. You know, then it's a matter of trying to present that to the town. So, you know, I perhaps was overzealous by not doing more homework and understanding really what goes behind each way that you'd phrase it. I probably should have waited until you returned and done it that way first. But to me, it was, it's a sense of urgency behind it of, we've all talked about a highway barn being needed for highway for years. And how long has it been on Capitol? I would say probably greater than 10.
Yeah, 12.
And nobody pays attention to it. And the police departments needed more space for probably greater than 10 and nobody pays attention to it. And the Fire Department was a call fire department. Some of these things should have been being addressed as soon as they went 24/7 and nobody really addressed it. And it's just, well, this is how we've always done it, to your point. We just can't keep doing that.
I'm not gonna get a little bit into a position where I appear to be by design opposed to this or any other option to address those problems. I'm as aware of, as anybody on this board, we know they need to be addressed. That's not the issue that I'm raising. The issue that I'm raising is this is not the right way to do it. If you want a committee to do all these things, form a committee and have a vote. That's not what we voted.
It's funny, you go to a selectman meeting and you never know what you're gonna get. I didn't, in my eye, we brought the department heads up and said, let's talk about your needs. And we gave the committee a name and they were gonna come back to us with the specific problems and challenges and resources that they have and don't have. And from there, the process was going to be absorbed and that we were going to, either through BFCC or another committee, get a little more serious with the design and what have you. That's what I anticipated this big. I mean, it's an advisory committee in and of itself.
That was the intent.
What is the, am I wrong with that process?
Again, I wasn't here. I'm sympathetic to the vice chairman's point, which is if you voted something and there was a sense amongst you, I wasn't here, I didn't watch the meeting either, about what it was you were voting on and this looks really different, then you should vote again just so that you're not alienating, so that you're honest about what it is you want the group to do.
But-
In a-
Straightforward with the regional thoughts and what have you.
Probably a poor choice of words, but so that you're straightforward about what it is it's supposed to do. You know, I asked for, you asked for a candy bar at one meeting, in the next meeting, you're a little bit more refined. I want a Milky Way. But we didn't vote on a Milky Way because I don't like caramel. We voted on a candy bar. My hope was a candy bar would come back. So I see the point. You've gone from a more general conversation to a very specific one. So if the view is that that's not the exact same thing, then you should have a conversation about changing this, editing it, put it on the next meeting's agenda, don't decide tonight. You could do a whole bunch of things. But this effort does require some structure so that the meetings get to solutions and that you are on a timeframe to get it done so that we're not just kicking it down the road, saying it's too hard, we don't want to have the conversation. We feel, on the administration side, we're a little bit exposed. We asked Town Meeting for the sum total of, you know, call it, call part of what we're doing here with the standby generator, basically an accommodation of the needs for a place to run an emergency out of, for lack of any other better place to put it. So 300 something for the roof, 300 something for the standby generator, another almost 400,000 to improve the Fire Department, and you have a highway barn that doesn't work, so you're gonna know you're gonna need to spend money there. You're gonna spend all that money and then, and then what? Talk about a whole new solution. So the onus is on everyone at this table, regardless of how they got to this table, to put as much information out there as possible on what it is that we need to do. Like I said, I don't own what you did at that meeting because I wasn't here and I didn't inform, I wasn't informed by my department heads about what they said or did. I came back and there seemed to be some vagueness, so I tried to lend some specificity to it. If I missed the mark, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's specific.
It's what? So Dave, what's, so the, your objection to what's presented here is it gives the committee greater reach, scope?
It gives the committee much greater scope, latitude and power than what we voted on. We voted on a committee to examine the feasibility, and there's that word again, of doing one public safety complex at one location. Now I read the town administrator's letter and I understand his statement, he certainly wasn't here. And we throw all these other things in. We throw in, we're talking about call full-time ratio, staffing ratio, we're talking about, and it's here in the letter, Mike, okay, regionalized dispatch and all these other things. Regionalized dispatch and all these other things. We didn't discuss any of those at the other meeting, and we didn't discuss that the committee would be making decisions on that. We discussed that the committee would look into the feasibility of doing a single public safety. And I watched the discussion here tonight go round and round and circle, and everybody wants to chime in and talk about how badly they need it. Of course they need it. It's the elephant in the room. Some of us have been talking about it for five years, okay? We need to address these things, and now, all of a sudden, we're apparently discovering that we have a sick building that has employees in it, and that's apparently just a revelation to us now. These things need to be addressed, and I don't think anybody at this board, or anybody who sat in this room disagrees with that. They need to be addressed upfront, and we're not going to basically change it. I don't agree with your analogy of Milky Way. I agree with your analogy of... I think I would change the analogy to, "I'll go get a candy bar, and then I come back with everything in the grocery store instead," all right? This has gone far beyond what we voted on.
Well, I think, with a little bit of latitude, if I could, is I think that you're misinterpreting on it, is if you look at it just... It's a feasibility. They don't have, to Matt's point, they have no power to do anything. They're collecting data.
Well, they never did. That's...
So...
A feasibility study never has the power of doing anything, to issue recommendations. That doesn't change.
So if, regardless of... I mean, ultimately, sitting in on the meeting, when we put this together and having the department heads in, you know, the chief, the assistant chiefs, the highway super, his assistant, basically, it was a wants and needs assessment. It was understanding what your building has, what does your building need to be, what are the things that your departments need in a facility, be it individual or collectively, and bring that back to us so we can start looking at it and putting together what may make sense. We didn't give them... They have no power. All they're doing is collecting data for us. You know, to Matt's point, all of these decisions, even if we choose to move forward with one, three, or seven buildings, it's on us. It's not on the...
I don't agree that they have no power, okay? If I gather information for you, I gather the information that leans the way I lean, okay? I don't gather information on the other side, that's human nature. I'm not accusing anyone of any subterfuge here, other than us investing this board with powers that didn't exist, or that we didn't talk about at the time we made it.
But I guess I'm...
And I'm not going to get... You... The town administrator uses terms like feasibility versus other terms, and I don't want to get into hedging words, because we'll be sitting here looking at dictionaries all night to see what feasibility means. That's not what this is about. The conversation was about, "Let's look at having a public safety complex, what we would have to do in putting everything together in one spot." And that's fine, okay? And now I read this, and we're in this whole new thing. Well, we're going to talk about all these issues within the individual departments that may affect staffing levels and all the rest of that, and that may affect the size of the building or the design of the building.
But in essence...
If it's just a feasibility... Just let me finish. If it's just a feasibility committee, why do we need to know that?
Because it's... To use a horrible term, it's like, that's how the sausage is made. I mean, I can turn around and say, "Okay, you know, we want to do a police department, a fire department, and a highway department, and for some reason, we decide it's going to be one building." So I'm not going to ask them what all their future needs are. I'm not going to ask what your manpower surveys look like. I'm not going to look like anything else. I know fire has 32 people, police has 12, and the highway has eight. We're going to build a building based on that. And then, five years from now, I got to go build another building. So, I mean, all of these things are, in essence, it's how the sausage is made. It's, you know, to Matt's point, what's our population growth going to look like?
Obviously, it's quite large, it's going to grow, and I think it's going to grow. You throw up the term of $15 million, is that right?
It's a hypothetical number. There's no... Well, where would it come from?
That's a darn good question.
That's right. I think it was just a...
That's a darn good question.
Yeah, well, you can sit there all night long, Dave, and just sit there and try to pick apart every word that comes out.
I'm not trying to do that.
Well, I'm...
$15 million is a huge amount of money. And a town of 9,200 people?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, where does it come from?
Where's the number come from?
Matt mentioned it.
It's just a number that he said. There's no basis to it.
Then that's fine. I asked him, "Is that accurate?"
Well, no, I'll tell you, it's not accurate.
I'm going to tell you that none of you know.
That's right.
And you won't know until you do an investigation. We all thought a highway barn was going to be 2.5 million, metal space building with appliances in it. We got a worksheet based on all of the projects that have been done the last five years in Massachusetts for highway barns, and it's 12 million. So I don't know. I didn't pull a number completely out of nowhere. It's probably on the high end of the range. But everybody's going to wake up to what this stuff costs and what supply chain disturbances are doing. We built a police station in Westport that we finished two years ago for 9.3 million. You build that building today, it's 18, easy. Easy peasy. You can't even get the shingles, they hung on the outside of it. So things have changed very rapidly. So don't be surprised if numbers come in real high for a whole bunch of stuff. But the one thing that I'm going to consistently say is that the only thing I own of the words on this page, and I am not being interpreted correctly, Mr. Chairman, the charge to the committee would be the five bullet points. Everything else doesn't belong to that committee. It belongs here with the select board. You decide those things. But if you go out and propose a building, and you haven't thought about what your staffing levels might look like, or whether or not you're still going to be mostly call and partially full-time, if you haven't resolved those issues for planning purposes, the building you're going to build isn't going to be the right building. Because 20 years ago, you built the fire station for a call fire department. 20 years later, it no longer fully operates because it isn't doing what it was designed to do. The sum total of the space at the police department and fire department for their network equipment, which fit in the square in this table, no air conditioning, in some cases, no grounding of the electricity.
That's just there is...
Those are the things that need to be discussed openly and how they're going to be solved, okay? And the bigger issues about, well, is there... Where's the dispatch position even going to be? You guys have to decide that. There's no... You should never give that to another committee. That would be... You get elected to be the chief executive, you would want to make those decisions directly. That's not what I said here. They're not being asked to do that. They're not qualified individually to make those decisions. They can only make recommendations about what they need from the service provider. And it's up to management, you guys, the five of you, to decide how you're going to solve that problem.
I think we've... Well, we beat the hell out of this particular agenda item number. So, and if it's a matter of... If there's a genuine concern with the public, with the vice chairman and everything else regarding how it was initially phrased, worded, and presented, to which everything that you've outlined here, and perhaps my recollection is foggy, is relatively in line with what we'd originally discussed sitting here around this table when we put this committee together using poor wording. Am I wrong? Other than the term feasibility, I believe it was needs, wants, understanding from each one of these departments to come back to us, but never were they tasked with making a decision.
The goal of it was just for informational gathering, not to make any decisions.
But if it would make it clearer to the public if we rename said committee to a fact-finding committee or a discovery committee regarding a public safety or public safety departments, I'm more than willing to entertain that and move forward with whatever charge it is that we collectively feel is the right thing to do.
Looking for a recommendation, I would wait until the very next meeting for Selectman Davis to be in attendance. That way, there's no misunderstandings or misleading or anything else that all five people that are involved in it are involved in it, so... And I'm not kicking the can down the road.
No, it's fine.
But I'm not going to... I don't want to go through the process of being said that I'm misleading or whatever. That's not my intentions at all.
Does anyone have any issue with deferring this until we have a full select board sitting in front of us?
I do not.
You said debt rolls off in 2023?
Mm-hmm.
How much, do you know?
Don't ask me what the principal is. The payment, the annual service, is about $400,000. So that's an excluded debt, so it doesn't play into our budget.
Would the rest of the board object to me taking an agenda item out of order as we are discussing Selectman Davis? Anybody object? Because I'd like to go to open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Specifically, as it pertains to the remote participation policy, to which I believe in our last meeting, we had deferred to following the guidance of the attorney general for the... Not the... Or the governor's order.
Attorney general.
Attorney general for remote participation to other boards. This particular board was still excluding or prohibiting the use of remote participation. We had never voted to adopt it.
We had it, and then we voted it back out, is my recollection.
So Selectman Davis, who is not here, will be... I don't know if it's personal or business reasons, but will be traveling significantly down to the state of Florida and has fears of being unable to attend meetings, and with the economic development that's currently underway that he is critical in, had asked that we entertain allowing remote participation for the board of Selectman's meetings to extend out along with, you know, basically for the same timeline that the attorney general's recommendation is.
Just one comment on that. I don't see how we could be excluded from that, because the town administrator said it was all or none, because there was...
But the attorney general's decision, the way they've interpreted the general assembly's action, they originally said this.
Okay.
It's all or none, because they defaulted to the provision in the statute that said that. Their subsequent opinion was that that entire provision has been suspended by the general assembly. Therefore, it is up to each individual public body to make its own determination on remote participation. So your vote to make it all in person again was no longer valid for the other committees in town. But it's still valid for you, because you decided you didn't want remote participation. And in abundance of caution, that's the way I interpret it, because you had made it in person for everybody, and that was made moot.
I would make a motion to allow the remote participation, because it's not something that appeared to be abused by any member of the select board, so it would be on an as-needed basis, obviously.
I'm in favor of that, given the flexibility that the state has currently provided us. Thoughts?
I have no objection to that. Al will be a part of everything.
You miss Al.
Yeah. So would that have been a second by you, Mr. Bonin?
Sure.
So the motion has been made and seconded, and just for ceremonial purposes, can we do a roll call vote?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bonin, aye.
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.
Is there any other open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
This might be an opportunity for success. I had to slip it in there, you know that, Kevin?
Yes, you did. Thanks. Seeing as none, I will go back to identify the charge of the personnel board and possible votes.
So what I have for you this evening, first draft, what I would like to do is send it to the personnel board, get their feedback, and then come back to you with what the actual charge would look like. However, since I promised it, I want to deliver it. Again, I'm using bullet points, and I think it captures what...
Head injury.
Ms. Stevens and I discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you.
So it's to review the structure of the town's compensation system for its non-union, non-contractual employees, which will include the competitiveness of salaries and wages provided in comparison with those paid to similar positions in similar communities, and the overall compensation trajectory, including but not limited to the number of steps offered, the clarity of the dividing lines between grades of pay, longevity incentives if any, and the reward for exemplary performance. So basically, look at your existing comp table with 10 steps, multiple grades, and maybe consider options. You know, is it working? If it's not working, consider options for addressing it. To research and discuss possible alternatives, so that's what I just said, to investigate the comparative rates of compensation full-time versus call EMTs and firefighters as between officers and rank-and-file of the call group, and as between the various skill sets of call members and propose solutions as needed. This conversation is about advice from the personnel board, because they've worked with the comp table for years. The comp table is a creature of their innovation. We have evolved over time to offer higher wages to those skill sets that we find ourselves often desperately needing. So we need that call medic, so we up the rate of pay for a call medic. And so then you get to the point where a call medic makes substantially more than a call lieutenant, who may actually be commanding in a difficult situation. So whether or not that causes tension, whether or not that causes recruitment or retention issues, is something we should investigate, discuss, and resolve if we need to. There will probably always be a noticeable difference between the hourly rate of our full-time union staff and our call staff, who have the same skill set. But that gap can't be so big that we're not able to attract call people to come and work and not... And still provide enough incentive for call people maybe to think about a full-time career. But it's the... It's this weirdness. The other policy that we have that I'll tell you I really disagree very strongly with, and I want to see changed, is there are incidents where we call people in, and if that call member is called to a fire, they get paid, let's call it 17 bucks an hour, because they're responding to a fire. We would call that same person in, because they have the credentials to be a medic. They get paid substantially more. And this causes whatever accounting fits that we have to deal with in the town accountant's office to, "Well, what were you here for? Was it a fire, or was it a medical?" My worldview is that if I call someone to help, I'm getting that person with all the credentials that they have. They are worth what they are worth. They are worthy of what they are worthy of. And so if I call you in, and you're a firefighter with call valve, and you also happen to be a paramedic, I'm getting a paramedic who happens to be a firefighter as well, regardless of what you do at that instant.
You shouldn't diminish the value of the person.
You shouldn't diminish the value of the person's time, because you create this strange incentive where, well, if it's a fire call, I'm not going to go, because I want to make 17 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Not that these people don't... Are motivated by the money, but I've just... The point is, it's... When it's snowing out, and it's 2:00 in the morning, and the kids are crying, do you really want to get up and go to something where you're not going to make what you were making? But I think the other thing that happens, let's say it's a motor vehicle accident, both fire and EMTs are going to respond, that same person, one instinct, you know, is there on the engine as a firefighter, because there might be a small fire or some hazmat, and they get there, and their services as a medic are needed. Now the person is... What do we do? The call was for fire, but the services rendered were as a medic. These kinds of things are very awkward to discuss with employees, and it'd be better if we found a good solution. So that's why it's on the list of things. Lastly, to identify potential areas where additional and/or new employees may be necessary to address the needs of the town. I'm not really thinking about public safety there. I'm thinking more about civilian town hall type functions. We've had two specific conversations with the school department about potentially shared resources. One might be part-time. We don't need a full-time HR person, we're still not that kind of town. But we have many, many pieces of paper that have to be filed in connection with our employees, and their health insurance, other benefit elections, there's onboarding, there are these issues that come up day-to-day into personal reactions, and HR professional might be a good thing to do. The need isn't on the town side. We have lots of transitions that occur in the school department, and it's work. It's work that our staff here has to do. That's a possibility. Another possibility is... Another possibility is professionalizing facilities management. I feel like we are always playing catch-up, that our maintenance bills for the buildings that we have reflect the need to do fairly substantial repairs on a regular basis, things that might have been caught with more attention. I don't want to put words in the superintendent's mouth. I will only say that he has openly suggested to me that if we shared a facilities manager, he might be willing to support sharing that person, sharing the expense. Whether or not there's the need for that, let's start the personnel board and get their advice as it comes up to here so you don't have to address things.
It would increase the efficiency across the board with all the...
But it gives the personnel board something weightier, meatier to work on than job descriptions. That's what we discussed, I think. So, let's...
So, we don't take action on this now? You want to wait for the feedback to come back from personnel? Okay. Thank you. Approve minutes and possible votes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 2. And the executive session minutes of November 2, retaining those.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report, sir.
As of today, we have 26 active reported cases of COVID-19 in the town of Douglas, which is down from 34 at the end of last week, but still reflects a level that is as high or higher than it was at the height of the pandemic. So, just a quick reminder to everyone that we're not really completely out of the woods on this, and there are still some things that you can do to protect yourself and protect others on a voluntary basis. We're not going to take any specific action on the town side. We're just reiterating to Public Safety Dispatch that there is a protocol for asking questions for people at certain addresses before we send first responders in so that they are adequately prepared when they get there. But for the rest of our operations, we're not suggesting a change just yet. This kind of came about, we were at a steady state of three or four cases a week, and it grew up to about 12 out of nowhere, and then it just went way through the roof for about three weeks in a row now, three reports. So, it's just something we're going to flag and take notice of. I know that the school system has announced a clinic for...
Five to 11, I think.
Five to 11. This is the Pfizer formulation, which has been approved for use in children. In the past, we would notice patterns, like family groups, because we look at the address, and it's clearly people who are living together, and they would, you'd get to the number 20, but it was through five or six families, right? That's not what we're seeing with these numbers. Distribution is broad across the entire town, lots of unique addresses in the list. Just a cause for mention. Today, this week really, we've made a lot of progress on public safety radio. There were two conditions precedent that we had to put in place in order for the radio system to be fully built out. One of them was FCC licensing of our bandwidth, so it didn't make sense to do the project. We couldn't get bandwidth, people communicate on. So, we finally got the last release from the state of Connecticut because we were going to, we're using a frequency that's being used somewhere in Connecticut, southwest of Connecticut. So, that jurisdiction finally signed off, so FCC is moving our licensing forward. The second thing that needed to take place was, decisions had to be made about the fiber-optic build-out between the facilities that are not going to be connected by microwave. A little bit of an aggravation, the vendor originally advised that a dedicated circuit wouldn't be necessary. We would just carry over our, just need fiber connections. They subsequently backtracked on that and said they needed an extended local area network in order to carry uninterrupted voice transmissions over fiber.
Is there fiber we can lease, like additional fiber on the phone?
So, we are.
Yeah.
You know, you're talking to the neighborhood, 900 bucks a month for three-location extended local area network.
Is it Verizon or Charter?
Charter.
Okay.
10 megas a second, which they say is sufficient. So, I did sign that agreement today for the work order to be put in for the circuit to be built out. Once those conditions are completed, we'll be able to get moving with the project. In the meantime, we are working on a workaround as between the two departments. Unbeknownst to the universe, some years ago, the federal government relaxed radio interference standards in motor vehicles. And now, there are many manufacturers producing cars and trucks that interfere with two-way radios that are being used.
Are there the cars with the hotspots?
No. In the case of our ambulances, it's the inverter. The inverter throws out lots of RFI, so for those who listen to a scanner in town, if you listen to ambulance calls, what you're getting is a loud hum.
That explains it right after the call while they get that, yeah.
So, we have existing equipment in the police department that will help us work around this until the new system comes along. The vendor is providing that without a lot of expense, so it's a good workaround using existing equipment. The discussions around economic development continue apace, and in pursuit of federal grants to match Masworks' grant, just more by way of background than action for the The federal government operates in its own universe with its own rules about what grant money can be applied for, and what it can be used for, and how the project looks to them once they make a funding decision. And that is not necessarily the same world that our friends at Masworks live in. So, we have to marry these two things together. And the way we're going to formulate our Economic Development Agency grant applications can be for one leg of the project because they want something discreet. They don't want all water, all sewer, all everything else. They feel like they, their mandate is to do a project, Super Nuts beginning to end, and that the project will happen. It's, you know, it has to. It's a condition precedent to the rest of the project. That's the targeted aid that they want to provide. So, we're recasting that a little bit. We have known for some time now that the project's definitely a go. The question of how the financing stacks up can be parallel tracked with the overall conversation about who the tenant's going to be, what the size of the building's going to be, exactly how it's located on the lot. All of those conversations are going forward, and the one that's furthest along is Blackstone Valley Logistics, which is the three-town project on the other side of 146 that crosses Sutton, Douglas, and Uxbridge. I don't ever want to be accused of not flagging this in the future, so I'll say it now, and I'll say it as often as I need to. Gilberta Street, Lackey-M Road, to Gilberta Street, to North Street, is a major thoroughfare in the town of Douglas, carries a lot of traffic, both local traffic and then people crossing from Webster over to get to 146 and all that other stuff. When we start digging the road up, it's going to be dug up, and it's going to be dug up, hopefully, in a way that allows one lane to remain open at all times. But it's a big project. There'll be lots of digging. There's going to be disturbance system, flow of traffic and the rate of traffic flowing on those roads.
The tricky part's going to be on the track, the trailer traffic tries to come through there, which they've been doing more and more frequently.
So, there'll be significant issues around that flow, not just because of us, but because Uxbridge is going to have 16 torn up to run water to what is very obviously, I think everybody knows, that's Amazon Building up on the hill. So, we're trying to coordinate with public safety, make sure everybody, mutual aid partners, that we're all talking to each other to make sure we know when roads are going to be closed, when details are going to be needed, and how this is all going to roll out. But the timeframe here, just so everybody understands, by, by one year from now, we'll all be sitting here looking at one of the warehouses, looking for their certificate of occupancy in their building.
In one year.
So, just look at the Amazon building. I don't know how often you drive that way, Selectman, but that building has grown up quickly.
The one in Bellingham went up fast, too.
Yeah. I mean, I, I live down the South Coast, so I watched Amazon's facility in Fall River get built in about a month. Whatever that is, 1.5 million square feet, 24/7, round-the-clock tilt construction. So, that's the way these things work.
That's great. I mean, Cedar Street Bridge, is that, where are we with that?
Cedar Street Bridge, we're running up against the weather, right?
Yeah.
So, there was, there's a meeting tomorrow on site. They want to pour the wing walls, but the reluctance is to tear up a lot of pavement if we're not going to be able to repaint because of bad weather. I don't think that's going to be an issue. The weather has stayed warm. It's not a big area. We should be able to get enough asphalt. But where all hopes are, that we'll, it may not be the 90-day timeframe originally spec in the bid, but because of weather-related delays, they still will come in pretty close to that. I think if you've driven by, if you've driven by, the culverts are in.
Yeah.
There's been some beaver removals conducted by a licensed professional, so Bad Luck Pond is dropping because that was an issue, because the outlet's been held back. I'm confident that the contractor will be able to deliver this to us in time, in the winter. We just got some of our trucks back from longstanding repairs, but the combo truck, the Highway Foreman's truck that was ordered after town meeting approved the funding in May, I believe, it's not on the line.
Probably won't be.
And it won't be, so we won't get it in time to plow snow in this winter, which is too bad. Couple of other quick announcements. I'm not going to steal a guy's thunder, but at your next meeting, you're going to get a briefing from, of course, the first meeting in December, they said.
Is it Good Energy, the first meeting, the 7th of December?
So, December 7th, you'll get the full rundown from Good Energy. I don't want to belabor technical points, but when you sign up with Good Energy and the energy aggregation program, you're locked into a long-term contract rate that is good for every 12 months, and it grows year over year at a rate that we were able to get when we went out to bid. It's a big statewide bid, and that rate right now is nine...
I thought it was 10.7.
10.7, I think. 10.7.
The grid's at like 14.
So, National Grid adjusts its power supply rates every six months. Their forecast is based largely upon the cost of natural gas because most of the electricity produced in the Northeast is sourced from natural gas combustion. Natural gas prices are out of control. So, energy forecast is now, the supply part of people's bills, if they stayed with grid and didn't join the aggregation, is 14.7 cents. So, there's almost a 40% difference now between the market price and the aggregation price. Historically, this has been very much to the plus side to be in the aggregation. Participation in Douglas is very high, but if there's people out there who are thinking about what this means for them, you know, it could mean 30 bucks a month on their, on their electricity bill if they have about 600 kW use a month. So, it's worthy to note. The cost of all energy products is very high. In terms of looking forward to the budget next year, though, our contractual price for heating oil in town is $2.49 a gallon. Market this week was 3.30 something and going up. So, even though we came to the process late, mid, late, procuredly, we've got a price that at the moment is beating the market by about $1.30 a gallon, which is, you know, we just have to be aware of this. As we budget for next year, next fiscal year, we're going to see a jump in fuel costs because we've been smoothing this out, but we're not living in reality right now. And if reality doesn't change, next year, we'll have to catch up with everybody else. It's pretty much exhausted a lot of what we've been working on here, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. All right. I believe we have executive session agenda items to discuss.
Which ones?
Is it...
Investigation, at least. I saw a number on the agenda.
All right. So...
All right. We're going to investigate. I will make a motion, well, before I do that, I want to give a shout out to the Douglas High School fall sports teams. The volleyball team had a very good year. The girls' soccer team had a very good year, and the boys' high school varsity team is doing great. They are playing in the state semifinals tomorrow in Walpole.
Go Tigers.
Yeah, it's been fun to watch. So, with that, go Tigers.
Did you ever bargain with your motion to...
Yep. Make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining and litigation, and then to leave executive session for the purpose...
Investigation.
What did I say?
Litigation.
I don't want to litigate. I want to investigate. Yeah, so I'll amend that to say collective bargaining and investigation, and then to leave executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bonner, aye.
Morris, aye.
Cortez, aye.